... meeting of September 1st, or I'm sorry, September 21st, 2023. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please take roll?
Jonathan Shelkey.
Here.
Jerry DeTulio.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Daniel Larson.
Here.
Janet Leo. And Patrick Quinn and Will Kearns are absent tonight.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda tonight? Seeing none, the agenda will stand as published. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 20th, 2023?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Please poll the commission.
I'm sorry, go ahead, do it again.
Thank you. We'll move on to the public forum. This is a time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Public comments may be limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody in the council chambers? I don't see anybody. How about on Zoom?
There might be one person on Zoom if you are wishing to speak on anything other than the agenda. Can you please raise your hand? If you're on the phone, doesn't look like it, press star nine.
Nobody?
Nothing.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. Case number 7A, I'm going to open the public hearing. Commissioner Larson, would you please introduce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1, A1, to Residential 2, R2. The request, the owner of 10800 West 48th Avenue has submitted an application requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1, A1, to Residential 2, R2, on their property. The zone change is the first step of the process for the property to potentially be utilized for two duplexes, two single-unit dwellings, or one duplex and one single-unit dwelling. If the zone change is approved, the applicant plans to submit a subdivision to split the property from one lot into two. The goal of the zone change and subsequent subdivision is to create two buildable parcels for two duplexes or two single-unit dwellings.
Thank you. Before we continue, I'd like to swear everybody in on this item, so please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. We'll move on to the staff presentation. We have a technical difficulty.
Good evening. My name is Alena Levasloira, and I am a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WZ 2307, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1 to Residential 2 at 10800 West 48th Avenue.
Oh, excuse me, you might want to move the mic down a little bit because you're cutting out when you're looking down. Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined in red. The property is located immediately south of the I-70 frontage road between Parfitt Street and Oak Street. The lot measures about 30,536 square feet, which is about .71 acres in size, and currently contains a vacant single-unit dwelling and multiple accessory structures, all built in 1955. The property is currently zoned Agricultural 1. The surrounding properties to the northwest and south are also zoned A1. Properties to the east are zoned R2. Most of the surrounding uses are low-density, single-unit, and duplex residential uses, and I-70 is located just to the north. This is a view of the subject property looking south from the I-70 frontage road. And this is a view of the subject property looking northwest from Oak Street. The applicant is requesting the zone change to R2 so that they can subdivide the oversized lot and redevelop it for either two duplexes, two single-unit dwellings, or one of each. The existing lot is currently non-conforming and does not meet the minimum lot size requirements for the A1 zone district. By rezoning to R2, the lot will become conforming and will enable the site to remain consistent with the surrounding area and would not result in significant change to the character. This table compares the existing A1 and R2 development standards. R2 was determined to be the most appropriate option because it retains the lower-density, single-unit, and duplex character of the area and maintains large lot sizes. The subject site is also located immediately adjacent to a large swath of R2 zoning, which contains a mix of single-unit and duplex dwellings. The R2 zone district would allow the applicant more flexibility to redevelop the property while maintaining the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. It would also allow the site to become conforming as it does not currently meet the minimum one-acre lot size requirement for the A1 zone district. In a subdivided condition, the site would contain two lots which are compatible in size with surrounding conditions. With over 30,000 square feet to work with, the subject property could accommodate two single-unit lots, two duplex lots, or one of each that exceed the minimum lot area requirements of R2. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on April 11th, 2023, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting. Two people attended the meeting, and the notes from the meeting were included in the staff report. Some concerns were expressed about potential increases in density creeping into the neighborhood. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from internal departments or outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to occupants and property owners within a 600-foot radius. Staff received no comments from members of the public on Wheat Ridge Speaks prior to this hearing. Staff reviewed zone change requests based on several criteria and consistency with the city's comp plan. The subject site is identified as neighborhoods, a designation reserved for areas where residents of all ages can live safely and comfortably. Defining characteristics of an established neighborhood in the comp plan are consistent character, mature landscaping, high rates of reinvestment and dwelling ownership, consistent maintenance, and high desirability. City goals that are met with the zone change proposal include encouraging reinvestment in the property, maintaining consistent character, and creating opportunities for dwelling ownership. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons: Based on the character and land use patterns in this area, the R2 zone district is most appropriate to accommodate the applicant's proposal for redevelopment of the property. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff finds the zone change to R2 is supported by the city's comp plan, neighborhood designation, and will allow for the preservation of the low-density and large-lot character of the neighborhood. Planning Commission will recommend a decision to City Council, who will also review the zone change request. If City Council approves the request, then the zone change is approved. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
That was quick. Thank you. Move on to the applicant. Do you have any comments tonight? If you want to, come on up to the podium, and you could speak, please. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Mei, and I am the niece for the homeowner and for the property address 10800 West 48th Avenue.
Can we get your last name, too?
Mei Zhao, Z-H-A-O.
Thanks.
And we're just hoping for this approval from A1 to R2. We feel like, you know, by approving this, it's going to be beneficial even for the community, too, because right now it's outdated property, and it's kind of like beat up, not maintained. And then with that, and then we can redevelop it and matching on the east side, which is all like surrounded by the R2. And then we want to like just make it more unified. And then I think that it's going to bring, like, you know, it's gonna look better for the community. And then we're hoping that, you know, it's maybe gonna bring a little bit population, but not too much for other residents that's gonna feel like maybe uncomfortable. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody from the public to speak on this item tonight?
There is one person that has raised their hand. Give me a second, and I will allow them to talk. Okay, you can unmute. I see Nato, I'm gonna not say it right, Frank Casado.
My name's Nato Francescato. I'm the direct neighbor to the west, bordering the I-70 frontage road. I am a large proponent of higher density and wish the city could allow a higher density. So I am pro this movement, just wanted it to be on record.
Can you give me your address, please, for the record?
It is 4760 Parfitt Street.
It was kind of hard to hear, sir. Did you say proponent or opponent?
Proponent. I am in favor of zoning towards higher density.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to questions from the commission for the applicant or staff. I'll go to my left. Mr. Shelkey?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a question for staff, please. On the zoning map that was included here, we see that the agricultural, A1 zone is toward the west, and the R2 is toward the east, and so they are contiguous, so it does, there's that connection there. Looking down toward the bottom of the illustration, can you tell me what CD zoning is?
Off the top, when you pull up the zoning code, I'm sorry, not off the top of my head. I think it's a...
It's not one of the ones that are typically listed on the zoning districts that you find on the website?
It's a conservatory district. It's a conservatory trust to conserve that space for nature, and that's in a private trust, and the city has designated it that way to try and maintain the trust's wishes for that space.
Please let the staff answer the question, please. This is quick Q and A with the staff and the commission now. Thank you for speaking.
Yeah, yeah. Hugh's correct. It is the conservation district. Yep, that's the property that was put into the conservation easement, so it can't be developed upon. It will remain as-is.
Great, thank you. And the other question I did have was, I guess I would refer the applicant because it is in the applicant comments. In there, it said the property is outdated, and I totally agree with that. But I did have, well, two questions, really. And if you wouldn't mind, come up and speak at the DS, please.
The applicant, please come on up. No, you can.
Yes. Thank you. There is a structure there on the property right now. Is it occupied?
It's not occupied right now.
Nobody lives there?
Nobody.
And in the comments that were submitted as part of the application, it says that the, there's outdated water well that does not hold sufficient water, and it's, the property is also not connected to the city.
Right. Currently, it's just on a well, and we, originally, like a year or two years ago, we tried to see if we can rent it out, but then because the water is insufficient, I think we hired someone to come and look at our water pump, and then they say that, you know, the water is pretty low, so that's why we couldn't rent it out, and then it's just been left it there. Then that's why we were thinking, well, then we need to do something. We cannot just leave a piece of poverty right there and then just like not maintain. So that's why we come up with this plan. If we rezonate, we planning to probably hook up with a CD water, the CD sewer, and then then probably divide it into like two partials of the land into like R2 zoning for like two duplexes each partial with CD water, CD land. We feel like maybe that way is more efficient, and then for the future residents, you know. So currently, you know, the water is not providing sufficient water over there.
Great. Thank you. And have you, and I can appreciate that issue becoming a problem, if you were looking to rent it out.
Right.
I guess the question, then, is have you had any discussions with the water district about their ability to provide water to that location?
That will be our next step.
Okay.
That's what we feel like we, we trying to, because we're doing this like by ourselves. We, we are very appreciative for the city helping us like step by step. So that was our next step, you know, talking to the Excel Energy, talking to the water department to make sure and follow their guidelines, and then just make it work.
Okay. Okay, no, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Disney?
I guess I have just, I don't know if this is a Jermaine question or not. Have you had experience developing property prior to this? As the applicant? You don't have to come up. You can answer yes or no, or...
Actually, she has to go to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So they can get on the record.
Maybe you want to stay.
Maybe stay until after I, everybody asks a question, so...
From record, we do not have any experience, but then my uncle actually helping for the construction part of it, so he understand a little. I don't have any experience for that, so we are pretty much relying on the city and then guiding us through. And of course, for the, you know, constructing part, you know, we're gonna probably hire like professional to do that because we are inexperienced for it.
Thank you. That's all.
Don't leave yet. Let's see if these are... Commissioner Leo, you have any questions?
Yes, I just want to be clear that this would be, there would be two parcels, right?
That's our plan.
Each one would only have a single unit or a duplex. It wouldn't be a single unit and a duplex on each one. Be one and one.
Right. So divided into two partial, each partial, it's either one single family or like a duplex. Uh-huh. Just, we are more towards like duplexes right now, currently. Like each partial will have like duplex, just matching the east side. That's our plan right now.
Okay. That, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Last question to clarify, you're the owner, or...
My aunt is the owner.
Okay.
I'm the niece translating and helping writing the proposal.
So is there a pending sale based on the rezoning, or is your family going to keep it?
We are, right now, we're wanting to like see if we can just build a duplexes or not, but if in the future, if it, because like I say, you know, in record, we have not done this before, and then, but in the future, if the cost is like maybe a lot, then maybe we divide it or we build this left or right partial first and then see how it goes. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant before she sits down? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission, from staff, or for staff, or... I'm gonna, Mr. Larson?
Thank you. Just one question, this is more of a general question on the A1 districts that are fairly common in that part of the city, especially when you get down along the Greenbelt, a lot of that property is zoned A1, and a lot of the individual properties do have residences on them. What is the city's outlook on keeping the districts that are zoned A1 as A1, or are there, is it possibly in the future that the city might look at some of the A1 zoning and decide that it may, A1 may not be appropriate?
Yeah. This is, has been a topic of discussion, especially in this case. And it's a valid concern because we've seen a lot of these more agricultural neighborhoods get overtaken with more dense zoning, so we acknowledge that. And while we can't guarantee that that won't happen to this neighborhood in the future, what we can do is be more intentional and conscious and maybe a little more conservative with what we are willing to support as a staff in these types of neighborhoods, especially where they're context-sensitive. We felt that this specific property was a little more unique, and we ultimately did settle on supporting a rezon here because of its adjacency to R2 zoning, the direct adjacency to the frontage road, and the 44th Avenue Subarea Plan calls specifically for diverse types of housing in this area. So all of those factors, we felt, made it a little more unique, but of course, in the future, if any other properties come in for rezoning, especially in this neighborhood, it will be very subjective and reviewed on a case-by-case basis. But I do think the word here for neighborhoods like this, especially this one, is going to be a little more conservative than what we would normally see in other, you know, more developing areas of the city.
The staff comments, reading from the staff report here. Additionally, staff wanted to be conscious of the existing character of the neighborhood, which is primarily lower-density and larger lots. Rezoning to something that would allow for smaller minimum, for smaller minimum lot sizes would not be appropriate. Is, is that sort of a, so going forward, that would be the sort of template you apply?
Yes, yep.
Okay, okay. That, that's great. Thank you.
I'm gonna close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I move to recommend approval of case number WZ 23-07, a request for approval of a zone change from Agricultural 1, A1, to Residential 2, R2, for the property located at 10800 West 48th Avenue for the following reasons: The proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, or welfare of the community, and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Utility infrastructure adequately serves the property. The proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan and consistent with the character of the existing neighborhood. The zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area, and the criteria used to evaluate a zone change supports the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for recommended approval, seconded by Commissioner Leo. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the commission.
Motion, approve, five to zero.
Thank you. You're on to City Council next. Thank you.
Yes.
So the next item on the agenda is old business. Do we have any old business?
We do not have any old business.
How about new business?
We do, starting with upcoming dates. I believe we have, Tammy, on the calendar, I think we've got a, probably an October 19th meeting.
Yeah, the October 5th meeting has been canceled, and it looks like currently we will have the 19th.
Any other updates on new business?
Yes. As you've noticed, you're missing one of your commissioners. Commissioner Stern has resigned. She's taken a position with renewal Wheat Ridge, and City Council will be making an appointment for the commissioner, the open vacancy on October 9. And then I also wanted to discuss with you, in your bylaws, it actually says that to amend your bylaws, you have to bring it to the meeting prior, or a meeting prior, in order to amend at a future meeting. And so what I'm doing is alerting you that on October 9th, City Council will be, we anticipate, adopting some amendments to the Board and Commission Code, and that will impact the Planning Commissions and also some of the other boards and commissions bylaws. And so because we need to have a motion to amend the bylaws at a previous meeting, I'm going to ask you to make a motion to amend the bylaws at the October 19th meeting, and at that meeting, Cole, and I'll probably mess up his name here, but Hasselip, our management analyst, will be joining us to review the proposed changes to the bylaws, and the purpose is to ensure that they're in conformance with that revised Boards and Commissions code language, and also just some minor cleanup items. So it's not a major overhaul, and he'll go over all of the proposed changes at that meeting, and then you can have a discussion at that time about them. And so anyway, with that, I'm asking that you make a motion to amend the bylaws at the October 19th Planning Commission meeting.
What if we don't like the...
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Well, you're asking to make a motion on something that we have no idea what it's gonna be.
No, you're only making a motion to have a meeting to amend the bylaws. You're not amending the bylaws by virtue of this motion. Only, you have to actually have a motion to hold an amendment for the bylaws at the next meeting.
So you're asking us to consider amending the bylaws on October 19th?
Yes, like I said, you can have discussion at that time, and Cole will go over all of the changes proposed and that sort of thing.
So somebody should make a motion to consider amending the bylaws when? What date?
October 19th.
October 19th. Anybody want to make that motion?
Can you maybe give us a preview, maybe, like a movie trailer or something?
Well, it says considering, so it doesn't mean that you have to vote for what...
But we don't have any idea what specifically we're gonna change.
I don't have the particulars. I have seen a draft. I don't have, I don't know if those will be the ones that are, on October 9th, that Council will be adopting the amendments to the Boards and Commissions Code, and so there could be changes, and so I don't want to give you an incorrect preview.
Right. And the specifics of the amendments will be part of our next meeting.
Yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion to consider amending the Planning Commission bylaws at the October 19th meeting. Any questions or comments? Please poll the commission on consideration.
Motion approved, five to zero.
All right, thank you. Those were all of my updates.
Any commissioner updates for the public?
Do you have any updates on projects that we previously approved that are under construction or about to be constructed, or like...
I don't have any additional updates from last time on under-construction projects. I went through quite a few last... I went through quite a few last time and right now we have several, well, quite a few under review. But I can tell you that next Monday, the Bank of the West rezoning is going to City Council on second reading, which will be the public hearing for that item. There will also be a resolution to establish an affordable housing commitment. That's based upon the Proposition 123 Affordable Housing Fund that the state has implemented. And what it will be is a resolution in support of filing a commitment with the state so that the city can actually receive affordable housing funding and grant opportunities and not, they're not guaranteed, but you have to apply for them. Or a developer who's developing within the city, an affordable housing developer can apply for those funds through the state and be eligible to receive grants or loans to help create more affordable and attainable housing. And so that will be also going on Monday to City Council. And then they will be having a special study session on amending some of the billboard language, just again, some cleanup based on best practices and lessons learned as we've had the billboards code, I can't remember how long it's been in effect, but the current one has been in effect for a couple of years. And I think there was an ongoing discussion that we would go back and review that and revise it as needed. And so that will be going to a special study session on that night, too. And then on October 2nd, excuse me, my allergies are not gone yet. On October 2nd, we will have the Let's Talk update for the North I-70 and Crown Hill Lutheran areas. Excuse me. And again, on October 9th, we've got the appointment for the Planning Commission. I can keep going. But that's, those are basically the big items that are coming, that will be coming to council that are somewhat related to something that has either gone before you or will be coming to you at some point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Larson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. At the last meeting, you mentioned that the RFP for the comprehensive plan is going to be going out or has gone out?
Yes, I can give you an update on that. The RFP is live. We will be, I believe it closes on, I can pull up the schedule, I think it's October 6th, if I recall correctly. And then we will be doing, we'll probably narrow it down to like the top three or something and then do interviewing of those consultant teams. And the idea is, is to have the consultants onboard before the end of the year. And then there would be a kickoff beginning next year with the, kind of using the basis of the Let's Talk platform and getting the, doing the Prime the Pump basically for the comprehensive plan with the whole city. And then tentatively on the schedule, and we don't have the schedule exactly worked out, but tentatively what we have is that Prime the Pump from January to March and then maybe in March-ish would be an open house for the community where there would be the full kickoff with the consultant team onboard and really get it going, ramping up. And I'll bring you more updates on that as soon as I have some.
And the projected conclusion?
Let's see here, October of 2025.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
I just had one quick thing. As you should know, I'm your Jefferson County elected treasurer. In the last two years, the Board of County Commissioners have directed to be sending out Tabor refund checks, property tax, Tabor refund checks. We're doing it for a third year. We're sending out, as your treasurer, 213,000-plus checks. The average check will be about $185. The median of the check is $110. So if you get a check that it's $200 or less, we can cash those checks at the county building in Golden. Just bring a valid ID. If their check is made out to a trust or a deceased payee or any of those types of issues, you can call. We can either reissue the check or you could bring it in with a death certificate. We could take care of it. Our goal is to cash the checks. Please don't send the checks back because you're against Tabor, which they've done in the past. I'll just send the check back to you. Cash the check, use it for a restaurant, use it for a donation if you have to. But it's gonna hurt this year because I have to take almost $40 million from our investments and move that money over to the checking account to cover these checks. They'll be mailed probably around October 16th. And the frustration part about it is that we're earning pretty good interest on that money right now because of the, the Fed rates are high, 6%. And we've already earned in our investments, just on the savings, $15 million this year and we got three months left. But, so we're gonna stagger that money over to the checking account to pay for the checks. But make sure you cash them. They'll be mailed October 16th and they should be a little bit higher than the last two years. First year was $7 average, the second year was about $70 average, and now this year it's about $185 average. Lastly, your property taxes went up 30 to 70% statewide. That ship has left the port. There is some options. I would recommend that if you have property and your property taxes went up, please research and look at Proposition HH, which is gonna be on the ballot this year in November. And I'm not gonna say pro or con on it, but just research it and you'll see what it can or can't do for property owners and actually renters. Because right now, both landlords will take the property tax increase and pass it on to their tenants. And so Proposition HH has some different options. So with that, I just don't want to say anymore about it, but...
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Larson?
Thank you. I do have an announcement to make and about two weeks ago, I submitted the petition to get me on the ballot. And so I am officially running for Wheat Ridge City Council in District 4. Look for signs around there, around the neighborhood. And I hope to, for the folks that live in District 4, I hope to meet you very soon because that's kind of the, the focus of my campaign is listening and listening to what the people in District 4 have to say. The website is dan4, the number four, District IV. Dan for District 4. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? We are adjourned.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Commission?
Motion approved. Janet, can you vote? Janet, can you vote? Janet, can you vote real quick? Motion approved, five to zero.